Good morning, everyone. Welcome to our committee of the whole meeting of the DeKalb County Board of Commissioners for April 21st, 2020. Welcome to the viewing audience. It's good to see all of my colleagues on video. Hope everybody is safe and well, and all of your loved ones are safe and well. We will go ahead and proceed with our agenda. I want to ask again if Dr. Ford's on.
She is on, sir.
Dr. Ford?
I see her video.
I see.
Looks like she may have frozen.
Okay. What I think we'll do then, until we get that unstuck, is just proceed with our committee reports. If the respective committee chairs are ready, then we'll just start with the Commissioner Jester, Finance, Audit and Budget.
Thank you, Commissioner Bradshaw. Can everyone hear me all right?
Yes, yes ma'am.
So we had a robust FAB meeting, and I think most everyone participated in it. So you all recall, I'm sure, what we discussed. We have, we're moving forward with our financial disclosure policies. We've asked the administration to provide us some more details on revenue and expenditures so that we can track more closely what we're spending on personnel services as the crisis continues. And we also, one of our financial statements, and Ms. McNabb, as usual, did a great job with that. And we went through March, so we didn't have a lot of implications from the crisis in those numbers on that financial statement. It'll be interesting to see when we get our April numbers, how they look. So we will have FAB next week, as we had it last week. So come and join us next Tuesday at 3:30 for that. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Jester. Commissioner Maria Davis Johnson of the ERPs Committee. You're still on mute, Commissioner, still on mute.
Good morning, Mr. Presiding Officer and everyone. Yeah, Chair, the Employee Relations Public Safety Commission, known as ERPs. My colleagues on the committee are Commissioner Jeff Rader and Commissioner Nancy Chester. We have several agenda items. We have our repeat for temporary personnel, which will come back to the committee today. We have a cooperative agreement for purchasing of software solutions by fire and rescue. It's coming back to the committee today. We have a temp service, our repeat, which is what we stated that. The committee will meet today again at, today at 2:15 here on Zoom, where we will discuss public safety, COVID-19 precautions, all assigned, and all assigned purchasing items. And so with that, you're back.
Thank you, Commissioner Davis Johnson. Now we'll turn to Commissioner Larry Johnson, Chair of the Ops Committee.
Thank you, sir. Good morning, everybody. Glad to be on this call. Ops had a few items, and I just mentioned two or three.
Scam and ad and take out.
You know, you ready to make a motion, Commissioner Johnson?
I am. Could you repeat that, please?
No, I was just being facetious. I'm getting ready to do.
I know, I know. I was trying to pull something. I'm sorry.
I got you. We just did in our Ops Committee, we did conventional trucks. We passed seven CNG-driven trucks to our county fleet. We have a lot of trucks that are outdated, and we need to update those trucks. We also passed a fire pumper, which will be used in fire services, because six of six additional pumpers, and they do 1,000 gallons per minute of water. And so those will be going forth and coming to us next week. We also did a reallocation of funds for the Sam Street building from Clark Harrison, which will help remodel that building, bring our planning, sustain the building of the department into that space, and will get us out of our lease agreement at Clark Harrison. I think that's it. Just one more quick thing. You may have seen, I want to thank our CEO about it, it's not too late campaign. We did hear about our census. Mr. Presiding Officer and Commissioners, and we talked about funding and what we can do. And out of that meeting, of course, we're looking at a budget amendment. But also, we got a it's not too late campaign, which now we'll be able to use employees who may, county employees who may be at home or need additional things to help us to make phone calls, which would be about over 200,000 phone calls to a hard-to-count population. So thank you, Mr. CEO. And I think that's my report, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Thank you, Commissioner Larry Johnson. Commissioner Gannon of the PEX Committee, please.
Good morning, everyone. Good morning, Mr. Presiding Officer. Thank you. I'm joined on the Planning Economic Development Committee meeting with Commissioner Steve Bradshaw and Lorraine Cochran Johnson. So thank you. Most of our committee work was actually taken care of and dispensed with at our last board meeting, except for two items. One is related to that Goddard Road property, which will be coming back to our next PEX on May 5th. And then Youth Services and Summer Programs, which we're going to talk about today in PEX. We meet at 1 o'clock today. We'll also have a very brief introduction to zoning, March and May, to just begin to have discussion of how that's going to be working. And we're going to also have a very brief introduction to the incentives policy that we began so long ago, and hopefully we will be able to use again. But I will later during the meeting call everyone's attention back to that report that we got on the incentives policy. And our legal department is trying to condense it into, from a narrative report, into more policy-type language, and that will be coming back to us on May 5th also. So I'll look forward to working with that. Otherwise, we'll have whatever comes our way on the agenda this morning, and see everyone at 1 o'clock this afternoon. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Gannon. Now we'll go to the Public Works and Infrastructure Committee. Commissioner Lorraine Cochran Johnson, please.
Good morning, PWI. Hi, everyone. First and foremost, good to see you. I serve as the Chair alongside Commissioners Kathy Gannon and Commissioner Nancy Jester. We last met on April 7th via Zoom at 3:30 PM, during which time we have two items, 0065 and 0159, respectfully, in the amount of $4,900,000 and $61,303,000 that were both deferred. These items are not time-sensitive. They are both related to our CIP, ongoing work there associated. And we are awaiting recommendation from audit. Additionally, we heard a total of five other items, 0256, in the amount of $125,000 for asphalt. Item 0270, $500,000 for polyurethane, pipeliners for public works and roads and drainage. Item 0309 in the amount of $180,000. It is for rock and concrete crushing by both public works and sanitation. Item 0322 in the amount of $2,500,000. It is for stormwater pipe repair, as well as chemical liners to be used by public works. And the last item we heard is item 0337, and that item was $1,528, and it is simply for the removal and relocation of power lines and poles along Prior Cliff. All of those items were approved totaling $4,833,000. Additionally, during that meeting, we had an update on the status of the consent decree and the work associated with it by Mr. Ted Reinhardt at Public Works. PWI meets today at 3:30 PM. We're currently, we have, I believe, even including Agenda Six items that we will hear. I yield back to the Chair at this time.
Thank you, Commissioner Cochran Johnson. Thank you, Committee Chairs. Commissioner Rader, did want to leave you out. Is there anything you want to share with us at this time?
I'm good to go. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Thanks again to the Committee Chairs for all of your hard and diligent work, keeping us on track. At this point in the agenda, we are honored to have Dr. Elizabeth Ford with us to update us on the COVID-19 response. I know, Dr. Ford, you're extraordinarily busy, so we are grateful that you have taken some time out of your schedule to brief this Board of Commissioners. And without any further preamble, I'm going to yield the floor to you to update us in your own way.
Good morning. Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Great. It's good to see everyone's faces. I've missed you all. A lot to share with you. Let's start with the numbers for today. DeKalb has moved up to number two. We just passed already with COVID cases. Right now, we're at 1520, second behind only Fulton, that has 2,198. We are number five in deaths, though. We have 26 deaths. Number one has 80. So we continue to battle this. I do have some racial data, but again, it's incomplete. But of the racial data I do have for DeKalb County, right now, of the, of the 1,500 cases, 1,000 of them don't have a race identified. But of those that do, 338 are black, are identified as black, and 109 identified as white, and 68 identified as other. As far as deaths, 12 white, 10 black, zero other, and then three unknown. The median age of death in DeKalb County is 79 years, but our age range is 31 to 99. We are now collecting information as of last week on who had underlying conditions. We have 19 that admitted to having an underlying condition, one that had none, and then, of course, many unknowns. So there was a request for zip code level data, and I do have that, but I need to clean it a little bit, because several of the zip codes only have a single individual, and then that makes it potentially identifiable. So I can share zip code data with you of everyone. I think the lowest that was reasonable was six and above, so I can share that. But I want to carve out the ones that just have a single individual. So as soon as I can scrub that, I will, I will share that with you. Testing. So testing is widely available. I know I have spoken at the town hall meetings about the shortages of test kits that we have statewide, but that appears to have been addressed. And we have two sites now in DeKalb. We have a northern site in Dunwoody and a southern site near Boulder Crest Road. And we have expanded our call center to be open from 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM every day, and we will do testing on Saturdays from 9:00 to 12:00, and then 8:30 to 5:00 every day. And that number, and I thank you, Commissioner Cochran Johnson, I saw it on your newsletter. It's our regular number, 404-294-3700, and you would just push option one, and then you would be scheduled. These are asymptomatic, excuse me, symptomatic individuals. All symptomatic individuals can be tested. So there is no longer a need to be referred by a physician, which I hope will increase our testing numbers, because we really haven't seen that many folks coming through. I have still been trying to keep the sites confidential, because what we don't want is people just walking up and demanding a test. And so you still need to call, make an appointment. When you are, when your appointment is given to you, then you will be provided with the information about location. And so we have Medical Reserve Corps volunteers that are assisting us with manning the test sites. DeKalb County Police have been amazing in supporting both crowd control and just ingress and egress from the site. So when you pull up, you will not get in if you don't have an appointment. And so they've been very helpful with that, as has Dunwoody Police over the last week. The issues in DeKalb, two things, long-term care facilities. This is an issue throughout the state, as I'm sure you've been watching the news. In DeKalb, we have 23 of our long-term care facilities have outbreaks. Most of them are small, one to three people, but there are several that have more than 10. There are a couple, I think, five that have more than 20. And so that's the ones we're focused on. So totally, we have 23 centers that have outbreaks, 223 cases total. There have been 16 deaths and 53 hospitalizations. Those numbers, that 223, is staff and residents. And the issue, as you have probably heard, mostly I've been talking about this as it relates to Fulton County, but the issues are the same. First of all, you're talking about an already vulnerable population, and they're medically fragile, and then you have staff that are coming in and out every day. And so it's just a real challenge to work with, trying to change their paradigm about how they deliver care. Part of the reason that people, that staff, work in those types of facilities is because they love seniors. And so they're used to being very physical, and I'll do your hair, I'll do your nails. And so to switch that to almost having to operate as if you were in a surgical suite is a very big difference. And so even though we had provided protective equipment to a lot of these institutions, they just weren't wearing it because they weren't used to it. And so we've managed to make sure that everybody is understanding what is expected of them, protocol-wise, in terms of not only their own protective equipment, but sanitizing the facilities. And so this is just an ongoing issue that we're going to continue to chase after, trying to keep it, keep it tamped down. But again, as you can see, so we have 16 deaths in long-term care facilities and 26 deaths total in our county. So that's where the majority of the deaths are coming from. So that's, that's our primary focus right now, is trying to manage that. And that's an ongoing thing, because the problem is, again, the staff are coming in and out. And so, you know, what you do inside of the facility may not be your practice once you leave work. And so I can't make you wear a mask once you leave. And so we don't know, you know, we're trying to manage all of that. The other issue is the jail, and there's a press conference at 10:30 today to talk about the current jail activities. We have been involved in that, obviously, in terms of contact tracing and making sure that testing is available. I'm happy to say, though, that since April 7, they have had no new positives. And so we're trying to manage that process and separate negatives clearly from negatives. But, you know, we also have this issue of asymptomatic carriers. And so trying to balance that has been a real challenge. And what was interesting, so far, we've not been aggressively collecting that data in the long-term care facilities in DeKalb. But what we are finding in Fulton is that one of the main ones that had the largest number and the highest percentage of infection rate, the bulk of those individuals were asymptomatic. And so that's a really scary thing, because we're trying to look for symptoms. The other issue is, when you think about seniors, you know, you may have dementia, you may not recognize your symptoms. If you're a person that has a chronic cough, you may not be able to distinguish the difference between that cough and the cough for COVID-19. So we're trying to educate staff on really, really observing patients and making sure that they are being assessed frequently. In terms of the homeless, next issue homeless, so we have been partnering with Melvia Richards Group to make sure that homeless individuals have been provided testing that are being placed into housing. I know there was a kerfuffle at one of the hotels. Honestly, there were just a small number of seniors living in that site, and the homeless individuals were actually completely separate from them. They had no shared facilities. But out of an abundance of caution and media attention, they were relocated to another site. We have had extraordinary support on a number of different levels. I've spoken about DeKalb County Government's assistance in maintaining our spot sites and even identifying our spot. We spot is our specimen collection sites, that's what we call them. So they helped us identify that. They have provided security. We've also had CDC Foundation provide us with a lot of donations of digital thermometers. And there's a huge pallet over on Memorial Drive right now that we, about 40 pallets, that we're not even sure what's in. But when they called and said, what do you need? I basically said everything. Our main shortages at the Board of Health are gowns. And so we've been trying to identify sources for gowns. Hopefully, when they open those pallets up today, we'll have some in there. We also got, I mean, this has been such a great community effort, because once DeKalb County School District decided they weren't going to continue classes, they donated all of their protective equipment from their allied health classes to the Board of Health. So that's been very helpful as well. So we have really had a lot of community support in trying to manage the process. One of the questions that came up was around pools. When are we going to open up pools? We are, so we have been, the fees have been collected for pool, because pool season is coming up very shortly. I do not, at this point, want to encourage my inspectors to inspect pools, because an inspection indicates clearance to open. And I, the science, I'm still waiting on that, because the rule, the state is saying that, well, you can practice social distancing. You can't practice social distancing in a pool, because when you, because you can't practice social distancing when you're in motion, A. B, what do people do when they come out of the pool? They spit water out. So we're trying to come up with a happy medium. I understand that people are ready to get back to normal activity, but we have to have an abundance of safety and caution still. And so I'm waiting for a little bit more guidance on that. But my personal opinion as a physician is, that's probably not a priority for me right now. We're working on, particularly now that there's some facilities have been opened up. I'm trying to make sure that we have a lot of education about continuing to practice the basic measures that we have been recommending all along. My child is one of those children that couldn't wait to get back in the gym. And so, you know, if he does go, he'll be going with a pack of wipes to make sure everything is wiped down before he touches it. And so this is what we're trying to do right now, is continue to educate, continue to encourage testing, and making sure that our messages are consistent and that we're keeping an eye on those nursing home facilities. That's, that's what's making me lose sleep right now, is our nursing home facilities. On a positive note, if you haven't heard, I will be returning back to DeKalb full-time on May 1st. They have finally, they have finally identified someone who is amazing to take over Fulton. It has been a very long year, and I really appreciate you all's indulgence. I have, I have been neglecting DeKalb, because Fulton had a lot of things that needed to be taken care of. And, and I trust my team here to maintain status quo while in my absence, but I, I know there's a difference. And so I appreciate everyone's patience in managing my insane schedule. And I will be very happy to be back here full-time. I think DeKalb needs my attention, and we need to shore up some things here and get, get back to regular operations. So, questions?
All right. Thank you, Dr. Ford, and glad that you're coming back to us full-time. That's good news. All right. At this time, I see Commissioner Cochran Johnson, so why don't you go ahead and ask your questions, please?
Thank you, and I'm sorry I don't have the ability to click the hand. But one thing that I didn't hear, can you give me the number, the complete number, Dr. Ford? And again, welcome back. I know that it's been very stressful for you during this time. But the complete number of long-term care facilities that we have in DeKalb County?
I don't have the complete number. I believe it's 67, but I'd have to verify that. I think it's 67.
Okay. Now, one other question that I have, and of course, you know, I'm sure everyone on this call realizes that our governor is moving us towards, or shall I say, out of, to a certain extent, sheltering place by allowing restaurants and certain other businesses to open. As it relates to especially those long-term care facilities, I think one thing that I'd like to see here, and I'm wondering, can we or have we considered requiring, or do they already have in place, for that matter, temperature readers? Is it mandatory within these facilities that at all times they are wearing masks as well as gloves? And another part of this, I think, is education that may be missing. Because as I, when I scurry out, I see in supermarkets individuals wearing gloves that are tattered, nails hanging through, and recently I became serve-safe certified. So I understand a lot more about safety. And can we require our businesses to undergo some form of training? Because even with those gloves, they should only be worn for a certain amount of hours or time, and the possibility of cross-contamination still occurs while wearing them. So can you speak to whether or not there's any initiatives or efforts in those areas to ensure that these folk, particularly our seniors, remain safe?
Sure. So when the first outbreak started occurring, even statewide, there's been guidance set down at the state level and at the local level, reminding them of, first of all, cleaning processes, and also wearing of protective equipment. Some of the facilities reported that they didn't, they were short. They had shortages. And so those who identified as having needs, we tried to fill those gaps. And so it's, it's an educational process, you know? And what we are hearing in some instances, like they'll, you know, we'll do the training, and everybody's great, and then three days later, here come folks with no masks on. So it's, again, it's apparent, you know, for, for a physician, we're used to having masks and gloves and, and have the whole process, because that's our, that's our life. But for somebody that's not used to that, it's, it's tough. And so we've been trying to remind people, I, I put mine on my gear shift in my car, so that I know I can grab it when I get out of the car. So things like that. So we're trying to educate at that level. We have recommended that all facilities, even our Board of Health facilities, we do a temperature check on every individual that comes in the building. Before, as soon as they come in, someone is posted at the door, that does a, a temperature check with an infrared thermometer and assesses for symptoms. If you are symptomatic, whether you're staff or not, you will not be allowed entry into the building. We can only recommend that at the health, at the long-term care facilities, because they're actually not regulated by the Department of Public Health. They are regulated by Department of Community Health, DCH. But that we can provide recommendations and make sure that, you know, everybody is clear what the expectations are, but we don't have enough staff to monitor them on a daily basis. And so their vested interest is in keeping staff and clients safe. And so we would hope that they would follow what we are recommending. You are absolutely correct. As it relates to gloves and masks, I did a Costco run on the weekend and was appalled to see the two highest-risk people were the ones that were least likely to wear a mask, which, which were the seniors and African-Americans. And so we're like, why are you, you know, why, with babies in the, in the, in the cart? And so I've made some suggestions about, at, at those types of stores, maybe having masks posted at the, at the entrance. But what we are finding in other communities is that people then discard them on the ground, and they discard the gloves when they leave, and then that's another public health hazard. And so we have to figure out a way on the way out to make sure that they are discarding. But if you have the mask, I'd actually prefer you keep it. So it's an interesting balance, because what I don't want is piles of torn-up gloves and masks sitting in the parking lot that somebody then has to pick up. So trying to figure out a way to do that, that's manageable. But yes, we are trying to make people understand the longevity of masks. Honestly, though, even for us, because of the shortages, we're wearing our masks two and three days. You know, unless you're in direct patient contact, the specimen collectors obviously get fresh protective equipment. But us, we, we get, our masks last for days, you know, and they can. You're supposed to preserve them in a paper bag, and they, they, you know, are viable as long as you're not soiling them. So we don't allow makeup. I'm just right now doing this because I'm on camera, but we don't, you know, we don't have makeup, and, and so you don't mess your mask up. And these are realities, because, you know, we have to be mindful of our supply, and, and because we don't know how long this is going to last. And so we may have to be stretching these supplies out over the summer.
Cochran Johnson, good. Okay, several Commissioners are indicating desire to ask a question. I'm going to try to do this in turns, so I think we'll start with Commissioner Davis Johnson, then Commissioner Rader, then Commissioner Larry Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer, and thank you, Dr. Ford. It's good to have you back in DeKalb full-time. I have a couple of questions. How long does it take for the test that you stated that is being conducted in Dunwoody and Boulder Crest Road? One question is, how long does it take for those test results to come back? Also, do we have enough tests available in light of Governor's, Governor Kemp's reopening of the state? And, and in his order, of course, hair salons and nail shops were, was focused. And of course, we know that a large percentage of African-Americans go to nail shops and hair salons. So have we taken into consideration that fact? And, you know, because I would, I would, I would think that if we do not have testing for everyone, then this virus will con- then this virus will continue to spread as more people come out in the community. And of course, with the nail shops and the hair salons, uh we're already disproportionate uh disproportionate uh count, I mean uh infected. So with the hair salons and the nail shops, it would affect us even more. So is DeKalb County um taking that uh in consideration? And the um number of tests and the um the time it takes for the results to come back?
Okay, so we, when, when we first received tests from the state, they were um extremely lengthy. Um you know, they, they promised a three-day, uh two-to-three-day turnaround, and in some instances, they were taking up to nine days. Which, you know, is not helpful in trying to manage a pandemic. So we have um many different contracts right now with testing um options. And so the current test that we have in great abundance is from a company called Ipsen, which is a lo- local lab. I believe it's in Sandy Spring, actually, but very, very local. And this test is promising a turnaround of twenty-four hours. So far, my staff says that that has been true to form as long as you, you know, get your, get your, they come and collect the tests at the end of the day. So as long as you get your test in by a certain time, they will have your results the next day. My colleagues in the southern part of the state are, are not as happy with that company, but for DeKalb, so far, it appears to be working well. Um some of the other labs, um Quest and LabCorp are taking a little bit longer, and so we've been sticking with Ipsen for the most part. Now, we also have a um each, each county that had a high burden of COVID-nineteen was provided with the, an Abbott machine. An Abbott machine is the same machine that they're using at CVS to do the rapid tests. Um CVS, though, has twenty of those, which is why they can do six hundred tests a day. We were each given one. And so um we are saving that because um you obviously with that limited number of capacity, you have to be very thoughtful about who, who gets a rapid test. And so right now, we're, we're focusing our rapid tests on the homeless population as we try to identify who goes into shelters and who doesn't, because you need to know that quickly. Because you can't do a test for them on Friday and then say, come back on Monday, because then there's a risk they will have been exposed over the weekend. So people that need immediate results will have that rapid test. Now, we haven't even received our machine yet. It was supposed to be delivered on Friday, and we still don't have it. So we're still waiting on that. But in terms of tests, yes, we have capacity right now. We have plenty of tests. And so that's what I'm hoping to ask you all to assist me in pushing that message out about getting tested. I also caution, though, that a test is a point in time. And so a negative test today says nothing about next week. And so what I don't want is people say, okay, well, I'm negative, so now I'm going to do everything. No masks, no gloves, and I'm going to protect myself, and I'm not going to wipe surfaces down. So you know, with that uh availability of testing also needs to be be attached to a message that says this is a single point in time and don't, you know, believe that that makes you immune to the disease. So it's a balanced message. Um I think that was all of your questions, yes?
You're still muted, Commissioner John, Davis Johnson?
Yeah, uh-huh. Uh the other was the uh health uh nail salons and the um beauty uh of in the uh nail salons and hair salons.
Well, that's what I was, in terms of targeting those communities, to say you need to go get tested and being mindful of the fact that a negative test doesn't mean that you are not going, you're not, you, you're not going to still be exposed at some point. And so when we talk about opening up these facilities, um uh that, that's my messaging, is that the same precaution should still be in effect. So I would not go into a barber shop without a mask on right now, period, if you were going to go at all.
Anything further, Commissioner Davis Johnson? You good? All right, Commissioner Rader?
You did.
I want to um thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. I want to um go a little bit further into uh the constraints or the uh protocols surrounding testing now. Um is it true, uh Dr. Ford, that uh the state is still dictating what in terms of um, you know, who should be tested? And um the tracing protocols are those all state uh driven at this point? Or could DeKalb County, or more appropriately perhaps, the metropolitan region try to ramp up uh more uh population-based testing? So that we and the tracing that uh would be necessary um or the, the testing that would be necessary in order to do a tracing regime? Um or is that still governed by and limited by the state?
So that's a great question. Yes, the, the, the parameters around testing are governed by the state, but they have been expanded um to include symptomatic individuals, which I think is going to make a dramatic difference, because that original limited uh priority list was really impacting our ability to, you know, test more broadly. Um so we, that, that just got re- relaxed last week. And so I want to see what our numbers look like um now that that, that has been relaxed and, and making sure that we get the word out. Um so today, I'm going to make sure that um my marketing uh staff reach out to, for example, the faith-based community. Um because we have gotten a lot of um offers about wanting to set up testing in different communities, and my answer is we have testing. We have testing available that's not being maximized. And so rather than to set up a whole nother site with a whole nother set of personnel, why don't you just come to ours? And so we're going to be more aggressive about communicating the new guidelines. Um in terms of contract, contact tracing, um we were asked to identify teams internally of um individuals who could assist with that, um and being much more aggressive. We've got about fifteen hundred contacts right now that need to be um dealt with. And so our staff that are not performing their usual duties are being deployed to assist with that. Additionally, we have MPA students from Rollins that are assisting us, as well as some uh members of our medical reserve corps. Additionally, the state is supposed to be providing us with some epidemiology um assistance um as well. So we'll be ramping that up shortly. As you know, contract, contact tracing is very labor-intensive. Um and so uh as we continue to um get positive cases, then we'll just have to be trying to manage them as best we can. We had um an individual uh in a single school system, um not here, um a hundred and forty contacts for that one individual. So um it, it's, it's a Herculean task, but we will, we will, you know, do our best.
Okay, so just uh to follow up on that, um so obviously uh we could be more expansive if the state were to move in that direction. I think that the state has moved rather, you know, unilaterally on opening types of activities. And it occurs to me that it might be that if we were able to demonstrate uh the capacity for more expansive asymptomatic testing and tracing um either uh in DeKalb or in conjunction with other metro Atlanta jurisdictions, that we could potentially um be able to accelerate into that, because anytime that the state authorizes, there's going to be a lag in um being able to actually uh accommodate that. You had mentioned that when it relates to the businesses, that now they're trying to open up. Now we're going to be scrambling to make sure that they're opening safely and that they're fully cognizant of the measures that they need to take. And so um you know, in our capacity as a uh funder of the Board of Health, I think it would be uh of great interest to us to know what a truly uh adequate asymptomatic testing and tracing type of a regime would like so that since we seem to be opening up businesses, that we would be able to um beat back any resurgence of uh, you know, infections through a more uh extensive testing regime, because that seems to me to be the thing that really is the foundation of being able to open is testing and tracing.
So what what's going to happen, I think, is that now that we have um more testing capacity and the, the current guidelines have been expanded, we want to see what it looks like this week. Um they have been collecting data from all of the districts this week about how many tests we're doing currently. And if it is felt that we're still not doing sufficient testing, I believe that then they will have to open up the criteria to just say anyone who wants a test can come have a test. Because if the point is to, you know, test and we're sitting with, you know, tests not being utilized, then we need to expand criteria. And so I think this will be a very telling week.
Okay, so if we were to uh trace contacts from a positive-tested symptomatic person, could we uh then uh offer tests to asymptomatic contacts that they have? Or are we basically waiting for them to uh, you know, to present?
If you've been exposed, then you can, you can have a test.
Okay, regardless of symptoms.
That's correct.
Okay, and so that would be potentially, if we were able to ramp up the tracing, then that would be a good way for us to uh get a higher incidence, because we could tell people that they have been uh
Exposed.
Exposed, and so they should have a test and they'd be likely to come.
Yes.
Right, okay. All right, well, again, um just in, you know, if uh, if I have heard you carefully enumerate the resources that you have and where uh they're adequate. But if you do see a need for resources associated with testing and tracing, um and particularly in uh coordination with other jurisdictions in the region, I think it's something that we should certainly um respond as quickly as we can.
Thank you.
Anything further, Commissioner Rader?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Larry Johnson was next. I see the county attorney wants to speak as well. Uh Madam County Attorney, is it urgent or can you wait till Commissioner Johnson has gone?
I can wait until all the commissioners have finished speaking, sir.
All right, sounds good. Commissioner Larry Johnson, Florida.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. Thank you, Dr. Ford. Welcome back early. Appreciate that and glad that you're here. Just a few follow-up questions from um Johnson and Rader. Um just a few requests, and I know you have to work on it because you're trying to get forward. I, I'm going to ask uh just requests uh from a testing and just from the contact trac- tracing standpoint uh that, that we, that you give us a budget sooner than later. Uh these numbers that we have in DeKalb are epidemic proportions. Uh my district, of course, is over ninety percent African-American, and they are now this population is being uh, this, this disease is, uh this virus is ravishing that population. And so uh we need to, first, I think, expand testing sites. I don't, I don't know we got two, but I think we need to do more. And I don't think we need to really wait until we just look at people who've been exposed. We need to test as many people as we can because we need to get in front of this uh as soon as possible, because the nail shops, barber shops, restaurants will be open on Monday, the movie theaters are now going to be open. Um and I think if, I've had to take down basketball hoops at parks because we didn't have people following the orders when we did say shelter in place. And so I don't want to wait till another person die or, or people get sick uh for us to do it. So um uh we need to make sure we move proactively on that. Can you pull up on the screen for me, Mr. Matowski, on what they're doing in Franklin County? Which is in uh Ohio. It's something I want the commissioners to see. And I think it's very important, Dr. Ford, that we do a very aggressive uh social media, social marketing campaign uh to let uh African-Americans know about this disease and how we need to get in front of it, because the stopping the spread is so key. But we're about to come back out like everything is normal, and we may, we need to curb the behavior as much as we can. And so I'll send you a copy of this, but it talks about the myths. Uh one, two, and three, and it states the facts. And this is from the Board of Commissioners in Franklin County, the Spelling Myths. And so uh I just want us to be more uh proactive on this. I think it's very serious. It has a lot of profound impacts on us post-COVID, because most people think it's going to be over once uh people, the, the uh virus goes down per se. But we need to be more proactive and make things happen. So those are my key points I wanted to raise. And I know you're thinking about these things, but I don't want the public to think that we have a step-by-step approach. We need to walk and chew gum at the same time. And this approach from having more testing sites to doing more education on social marketing, social media, whatever we have to do, because this uh virus is very serious. And uh you see, we haven't had the data, racial data on the first one thousand. I guess once we ever, if we get that data, we will find out disproportionately, uh African-Americans are, are being impacted by this disease. And I know we talk about co- comorbidity and other symptoms, but um health disparities and, and social determinants of health play a very key role in where we are. And so it, you saw MiF3 talked about. Uh due to a higher rate of African-Americans working in essential jobs, less access to healthcare, inability self-quarantine, the community is at high risk of exposure. And I want to make sure that that stays in the forefront of our mind. Some people can't afford to work at home or telecommute. Some people had to get out there because they had to keep their livelihoods together. And so people living next to interstate hotels or whatever, a lot of them uh lost their jobs first, uh from waitress, dishwashers, cashiers. So it's just a lot of things that we have to keep in mind. And, and I know you're working on this, but I got to make sure from my conscious standpoint that I bring these issues up and that we make sure that we're proactive on these issues. Thank you.
I think it's a great campaign. So yeah, if you send me that, we'll definitely try to create something along that line.
Thank you.
Anything further, Commissioner Johnson? I'll take that as a no. Uh I think Commissioner Gannon was signaling next, so go ahead, Commissioner Gannon.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. All points very well taken. Thank you, commissioners. Um and I think we can also utilize uh Dr. Ford, whatever is developed. We all have communication channels. So you please let us help get that message out. Um I wanted to ask, um and this doesn't have to be answered at, at this point in time, unless it's a resounding no. Um but we have um staff that are classified as nonessential. We have um the school system with teachers who won't be working um during the summer. We have other kinds of um potential um employees that are not um telecommuting. And I'm wondering, is it possible to utilize our other um government employees to do contact tracing with, you know, a certain amount of training? Is that something that's even feasible?
I think that would be great. I, I'd be willing to explore it. And if not contact tracing, then they, I could certainly use help on the call center, and then we could take our staff and do this contact tracing. Because we're do, we're dealing with the same thing everyone else is dealing with, which is also something I forgot to mention. When we close the schools, that, that chopped my staff in half, or in third, in a third. So um so right now, we have very minimal service delivery. For example, we're really only doing WIC for uh WIC birth control pills and um some STD services. And so um we're trying to manage our own internal social distancing. And so yes, bodies are always helpful. So that would be great. And I will definitely look into that, because I know that as we expand the testing, we're going to need more help with the calls and scheduling. And even um we have a script that we're getting, you know, for FAQs, and so anything would be very helpful. Yes, that would be great.
And all those people are on the task force, so perhaps that's a way to ask for that kind of assistance.
Okay, that would be great. I'll, I'll definitely let this um team know that. Commissioner Johnson, I wanted to share with you that the top three zip codes in DeKalb for, for cases are three oh oh five eight, three oh oh eight four, and three oh oh eight three.
Okay, that's, that, that's a good spot to put the testing, next testing site around that area, central DeKalb and that area. So we just need more sites.
Well, so we, we need, we need sites, but we need, oh, okay, uh the numbers, five eight, eight four, eight three. In fact, the top five, um five eight, eight four, eight three, three four, and three eight. Those are the top.
Five eight eight four, eight three, three four.
I'm going to send this to you. I'm going to send it to you. Yeah, I'm going to send it. I just wanted to share that. Um so the thing with testing, so we've had these sites up and we're just, people are not coming out. And so um, you know, we're, I don't have a problem setting up sites all over the city, but we can't, we don't have enough manpower to do six tests a day. So that's why we're trying to concentrate on where we know we can get So that's why we're trying to concentrate on where we know we can get volume. And so we've not hit a hundred tests in a single day yet.
So we can't use National Guard or people like that to help us with testing?
The capacity is not the issue. People just aren't coming out.
Well, that's why I'm saying we need to advertise the information out because everybody, we need to get everybody tested. And that's what my message is about. Social marketing, social media, once the word, most people held back because if your physician did not give you a letter, you couldn't go get a test. But now since we've opened it up, we need to get the word out that please go get your test because you, we, people are going back out like, like it's normal and it's not normal. And so we need to help you with that message. We got a great Emmy award-winning TV station, DCTV. We have our own social media sites, all of us as commissioners. Our CEO has the bully pulpit. But this is a very serious, and now we passed Dougherty County as number two. We have to get in front of this because it's, the summer is here and people don't want to be locked in the house anymore. And so we have to, they weren't locked in a lot. We told them it's shelter in place. So we, we just got to, we just got to push y'all.
Sure. And we've had offers all over the county of people offering to, you know, allow us to use their space as sites. So, and DeKalb County Government has great helping us set up sites when we identify. So we're, we just need to get bodies. So once we get a sense of where the volume is, then we'll definitely be directing staff to identify new sites. Thanks.
Hey, I see Commissioner Cochran Johnson wanted to speak again.
I see. Let's make sure I'm on. I am. I just wanted to say that I understand where Commissioner Larry Johnson's statements are coming from because I have received a lot of emails from people saying we don't have enough testing sites. And I think it's because of a lack of education of understanding because, of course, I had those same concerns and I came to you direct. It was at that point you made me aware, the current sites are totally underutilized. So under the circumstances, because I had done research on assembling teams and having test sites at a few different locations, the manpower is what's critical. Need to ensure as commissioners, and we need to engage the media and everyone possible so that they understand what the process is, so that they can report to and utilize what we have. And I would think that at the time that we reach capacity, if that happens in terms of testing, you will let us know and expand that testing. But I really think there has been a huge lack of understanding of what we have and how to go about seeking testing. Also, the second part of that is the hysteria, and understandably so, of people who plain and simply want to know their status, so to speak. And the fact that those individuals just can't report in for testing unless they have demonstrated symptoms. Although now it does not require the medical referral. So I think if we really, shall I say, hammer down and get that message out, then people will feel more comfortable understanding that there are locations that we.
Right, I agree. Thank you.
Anything further, Commissioner Cochran Johnson? Okay, see Commissioner Davis Johnson.
Okay, yeah, I'd just like to follow up with that. I just feel that people just don't know the availability of testing. And of course, I know now because I'm listening to you. But if I would get, you know, if you would email me that information, and I'm sure the same with all other commissioners and the CEO's office, then we can get that procedure out to our constituents so that they will know. One other thing that, one other question that I had was about the hospitalization. I know the last two people that I know that passed away because of this COVID virus, their families stated that, you know, they had the symptoms about ten days before they were even admitted to the hospital. And so I would think that, you know, the longer that you are not hospitalized or not focused on would be the more damage that would occur to your organs. So when you are hospitalized after a week or two, you know, I mean, your body's shutting down. So could you speak about admissions when one is diagnosed? How is that determined? When they need, when, yeah, I mean, when they need to be hospitalized? And whether or not, if you have the symptoms and you've been diagnosed, are you automatically hospitalized? Or is, you know, because I know that we have just so many spaces.
Correct. So that's the challenge is that, let me just say that eighty percent of the individuals that contract COVID have a mild to moderate course. And so everyone doesn't need to be hospitalized. The, the challenge is determining who. And so I have a dear friend who's actually on a ventilator right now because she was one of those people that did not fit the high-risk category. She was in her forties and started with just allergy, what we thought were allergy symptoms. And so when she called her primary care doc, they said, don't go to the hospital, stay home, you know, and fight it out. Because first of all, there is a bed shortage and they're only going to take at the hospital the sickest. And so she stayed home and tried to manage it, you know, in-house with antibiotics, et cetera. And it got to the point where she could not climb the stairs. And that's when she presented to the ER. And as she got to, the scary thing about COVID is that you literally go from zero to sixty. So she got admitted to the hospital with, you know, mild to moderate symptoms. But over the hospital course, within two to three days, she was on a ventilator. And so that's the challenge with this virus is not knowing when, when to pull that trigger. But I think anytime you have respiratory symptoms of any level, if you're having, if you're struggling to breathe, that's when you present to the emergency room. But again, that happens quickly. A lot of people, we've heard stories about she was fine and then the next day X, Y, and Z. So you've got to have a little bit of diligence to make sure that what you think is mild doesn't all of a sudden become severe. So it's a challenge because it's the respiratory piece that is deadly. And so monitoring your respiratory status, you know, fever plus or minus, that won't get you in the ER. But if you're having problems breathing and even sometimes when people are presenting to the emergency room, they're sending them away and saying, you know, fight this out at home. So it's a challenge because we do have shortages.
Anything further, Commissioner Davis Johnson? All right, Commissioner Jester, did you have a question? You're good. Okay, before, I want to make sure everybody, all of my colleagues have had a chance to query Dr. Ford. All right, well, I'm sure, I don't want to speak for you, Dr. Ford, but I'm sure you're available. If questions come up, we can reach out to you individually.
I thought, oh, is Ernst had a question?
Yeah, I'm going to circle back to County Attorney in a moment. I've got, before I turn to the County Attorney, I've got just a couple of things myself. One, not to belabor the point, I would simply ask that if we proceed to the point where we're expanding in terms of testing locations, just consider Central DeKalb as a location since we seem to already have one in North DeKalb and one in South DeKalb. So that would, that would be my ask on behalf of the constituency that I represent. And then my question is, do we have a way of stratifying those infected by occupation? In other words, are our frontline workers being infected at a higher rate than everybody else?
We're not collecting that data at the, at the Health Department. We do not have that data.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. Madam County Attorney, floor is yours.
Good morning, Commissioners. I thought it would be appropriate to remind you, I know that you were fully aware of it, but also to remind the public that the reopening of the businesses that you all have been discussing this morning was not done by the county or any county. It was actually pursuant to the Governor's executive order, which was issued yesterday evening. And I thought I would give you a couple of points that are in that executive order, given the comments that have been made this morning regarding testing sites and businesses. And I anticipate further guidance over the weekend. So for example, while the media has addressed theaters and restaurants, that is not contained, and the reopening of theaters and restaurants, that is not currently contained in the executive order that was issued last night. I anticipate, because that was mentioned in the Governor's press conference yesterday, that that may be the subject of another executive order between now and Monday. With respect to the order that was issued yesterday evening, it did cover a number of businesses mentioned by Commissioner Maria Davis Johnson and other commissioners, including nail salons and gyms, and had some measures regarding social distancing and requirements that those institutions should use as they decide to reopen. But the largest part which you should be aware of is that in this executive order, the Governor designates the State Public Health Director as the individual who has the authority to make decisions about uniform testing services throughout the state. And specifically uses the term overriding the orders of any local director of Board of Health, with all due respect, Dr. Ford. And so there, I anticipate there may be some further guidance. And in fact, mentions that the adjutant general of the Georgia National Guard, acting on behalf or at the direction of the state health officer, is entitled to enforce the uniform testing services and requirements that would be imposed by the state health director. It does appear in this order as well that they had, that the Governor has indicated and designated the Augusta University Health System to provide assistance to the state health director. But as you, and I think all of the points that were made this morning are valid and necessary, but I do think we will have to take guidance from the state as that comes in. Certainly, it is important to make your views known so that those can be known regionally. But I thought it would be important for your viewers to know that this was not a decision made by either your CEO or by the Board of Commissioners or by our District Health Director with respect to the reopening of businesses and designation of the State Public Health Director.
Okay, thank you, Madam County Attorney. Anything further?
No, sir.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Davis Johnson?
Yeah, I have a question of Vivian. Vivian, does the CEO, mayors, of the, any particular municipality or county have any discretion as to businesses that will, that businesses that open in their jurisdictions?
No, ma'am, I do not believe that they do. In fact, the Governor's order, I'm just trying to get to that section so that I can use his language. It is clear that there is no allowance, excuse me, I apologize, let me get to that page for you. It is clear that no county order ordinance has the authority to either expand or restrict the provisions of this executive order.
All right, thank you. Yes, Commissioner Larry Johnson?
Madam Attorney, thank you. Is there anything in the provision that talks about epidemics? In terms of when will you move from sheltering in place to open up? Are we following the steps that are outlined by the President of the United States? Or do we, do, will his, the President supersede the Governor? Or how does that work? Is there some process in place for that?
I don't believe so. As of now, the President of the United States has declined to issue any sort of nationwide orders. I believe that most of the guidance offered by the President as of this morning is not mandatory. And as I read this executive order, it does not necessarily follow exactly the dictates of the various stages that have been discussed. But it is a staged order anticipating further orders in the future.
Okay.
Right.
Yes, Dr. Ford, so we, we will, as we manage the, the virus and the the amount of folks who are receiving, when will, how will we base our steps in terms of coming? Opening up, I know the Governor's opening up. Will you have a companion piece that reflects of prevention around, like Commissioner Davis Johnson talked about nail shops, salons, what should be a business protocol because we're moving from nail shops to salons to gyms and now with theaters? We had restaurants. How do, how do we do it when we want to open up our recreation centers? Other places that have high visible, I know I'm getting a lot of calls from churches. A lot of pastors are not happy about the, the order because they still feel like their congregants won't be safe going to church. Who, will you give us some guidance as the Governor starts to open up the county on what precautions and prevention need, things that we need to be taking?
Sure. I mean, we just got this information yesterday, the same time everyone else did. So we're still formulating messaging. You know, let me just say this, the Governor allowed gatherings, but that doesn't mean they necessarily have to take place. And so that's at the discretion of individual businesses because I have heard from specific businesses that still said they were not going to open and churches that said they still weren't going to gather. And so it's still up to the individual organizations to determine whether or not they will open based on the risks. But we will be trying to come up with some kind of communication process to reach out to these businesses to make sure that they understand appropriate safety guidelines.
Commissioner Johnson, you good? Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions from Commissioners? I want to make sure everybody's had a chance to get their questions asked. All right, right now I'm not seeing any, so we're going to go ahead and proceed. Dr. Ford, thank you so much. It's a pleasure to see you.
Pleasure to be here.
Appreciate your professionalism and your competence and guiding us through this process. We really do appreciate it. And once again, it's good to have you back focused on DeKalb almost full-time as of May.
Few more days, T minus eight. T minus eight, not that I'm counting or anything. So I will, I will send you all this zip code level data shortly. I'm, I'm going to run over to this press conference real quick, but I will have this to you by the end of the day. Let me talk about communication streams though. So my PIO has just been dealing with your PIO. And so that's how information is being shared. So if you would prefer to have things pushed directly to you, we can do that as well. But we're trying to manage our own communicate because we've got press, we've got state, you know. So however you all want it done, that we could make that work for you. So just let me know.
Excellent, thank you.
All right, thank you all.
We're going to have a tremendous day and we surely do appreciate it.
Same to you. Take care, everybody.
Okay, colleagues, we're going to go ahead and proceed with our agenda as it's printed. So the next item is a SLOSS update. So at this point, I'll hand it over to the Chief Operating Officer to take us through this process.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer and members of the board. What we'd like to do is kind of give an overview of financial conditions primarily. And this was requested, I think, at the last cab. And so I will have Mr. Kingsbury with Atlas actually go through the finer points. But some of the key things that we want everyone to take away from this discussion is that the county is delivering on its promises. You know, the program continues to move and projects continue to get done. The management systems that we set in place early on, if you recall, when we first received this SLOSS funding, we spent a lot of time developing management systems and we think that those are paying off as it relates to the oversight of the projects and the program. And we are actively managing our revenues, our expenditures and our projects. So as Mr. Kingsbury, if we can bring him up, begins to present, we will be able to go through some of the detail and give you a better understanding of where we are. And we are intending to have a meeting to go into detailed discussion of projects on Thursday. So without any further ado, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Kingsbury and he'll talk through our overall financial position, how we are actively managing our revenues and our expenditures. And we will all be referring to the document that I sent you at eight forty-five this morning. Mr. Kingsbury?
Does everybody see the document?
Does everybody see the document? Good morning.
Yes.
So very quickly, follow up on what Zach said. From where we sit, just. The county is in great shape. Three if there's only three things you take away this morning, and it's been a long morning with Dr. Ford. We're in good shape. There's money in the bank. As Zach said, work is going to continue this year. We just don't simply know what the impact of the current economic situation will be. But having said that. I fall back on the work that TJ and Diane and everybody did. Going forward or to date, we thought we'd have one hundred nineteen million dollars in revenue. We actually got one hundred sixteen. We're ninety-eight percent of of projections. Over the months that we've briefed y'all, that's that's just great. Anything five percent variance is is just phenomenal. We projected an average collection of five million dollars a month. We averaged just at five million. Board, y'all have approved ninety million dollars worth of expenditures, and that's everything from day one on the radios and police guards. Through roof repairs and so forth. So for Thursday, not to take much more time, pages two and three of this little report. Everything in green are projects that are funded and authorized by the board. So they're going to continue to move forward. So for instance, that's the current twenty-five miles of resurfacing. And some of the roof repairs at county facilities. There's twenty-five million dollars as of the end of February in the bank from the state. That's not committed. And that's in blue. And we have two high profile projects we're going to push forward this year because A, we've got the money to build them. And B, they're critical infrastructure. That's Fire Station Seven. And the budget estimate's about six point one million dollars. And there's the new facilities for the fire training folks on Sam's Road in South DeKalb. We think that'll be about a million and a half in round numbers. And. Behind the scenes, our financial folks have shared with Diane, with some of our other county clients and municipalities. The the press is all over the place, but we think. For a baseline, we looked at fifty percent reduction in sales tax. In March going forward for six months. And then a twenty-five percent reduction for the following six months. And good news for DeKalb, if there is a good news, a silver lining, with a six year SPOST being only in the second year. Of collections, we think we're probably looking at being down. Somewhere in the neighborhood of sixty million dollars at the end of the six year period. So that's about ten month loss of revenue. So the good news is the majority of the program will go forward. Bad news is some of the bigger ticket items. We just don't have enough information to make a decision. And I think that's the topics on Thursday. We'll go through line by line. The budget categories and where the expenditures have been. So that's all I've got, Zach.
Okay, so thank you. And I think the important thing that would what we want to communicate. Is we know what we know. And what we know is through the latest report. Okay, and so what we want to be be able to do is articulate and ensure that you take away. An understanding of our current condition. We, like anyone else, don't have a crystal ball as to what the future will will hold. But we will continue to actively manage, continue to report back. And continue to through active management, if adjustments are needed to be recommended, that's what we will do. So again, the key points to to understand is that projects are ongoing. As Mr. Kingsbury mentioned, our revenues are fairly close to spot on with. What we had anticipated through today's date. We have. Three months, really five months reserve in the bank as we sit here. And we have enough funding, you know, if God forbid, you know, there were no more funding. Which no one anticipates, but I mean with with the the projects that are on the street. And with the money in the bank, we are able to continue working through this time next year. Over the next several months, we will all be looking at the same data. We'll be reacting to the same data. And through our active, ongoing management of projects, implementation of the. Program or the project implementation plan, which is a strategy that we implemented early. And it requires any project before it goes to the agenda. Not only does it go through. A process where myself, Dolores and the CEO, as the SEC will review the project. Then we present it in the SPOST COWs, you know, and get. Everyone to understand here is what we are going to propose. And then the following month, typically the projects move forward. We have found that to work very well. And through that process, we have managed to not only pave a hundred miles of roads, we have managed to. Move forward on these elevator projects that have been in dire need for quite some time. And we are teeing up projects like Fire Station Seven that has been. Out there for quite some time. So. You know, the the state of the SPOST is strong and we look forward to talking about projects. On Thursday, and we will talk about financial information as we get it and as we actively manage.
All right, thank you, Mr. COO. Anything further at this time before I turn to my colleagues?
No, nothing, nothing for me.
Okay, any questions or comments from commissioners? I see Commissioner Larry Johnson. Go ahead, sir. Commissioner Larry Johnson? You're on mute. No, you're good. Okay. I apologize. Would any does anybody else have any questions?
And if you if you have questions you want to send us to to discuss Thursday, you can do that too.
Okay, right now I'm not seeing anybody that wants to be recognized. I hope that's correct. Okay, Commissioner Gannon, go ahead.
Yes, just very quickly, I wanted to thank thank them for sending us this sort of overview. Because, you know, we've been worried about sales taxes going down and wouldn't really share of where we were financially. So this is helpful. As a prelude to our Thursday meeting. So thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, any other commissioners? All right, right now I'm not seeing any anyone, so. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and proceed then and just to remind everybody, at the risk of being redundant, we'll do our regularly scheduled SPOST. Cow meeting this Thursday at ten AM. Our calendar should already be populated with that information and it'll be obviously via Zoom. All right. Mr. COO, at this point, we will review the proposed executive agenda. Floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer, members of the board. The proposed. Executive agenda for April twenty eighth begins with an item. Proposed preliminary item, I apologize, from the airport, which is a standardized teehanger lease agreement with Vinay Bose.
Okay, let's pause as. I would suggest that go to consent unless there's an objection. All right, consent. So ordered, continue please.
Followed by a conveyance of three hundred and forty-five point nine six square feet of Linear Gardens Park to the Georgia Department of Transportation. For a traffic signal upgrade project.
Commissioner Gannon?
Yes, thank you. That probably can go to consent if this is that same item that we had on before. And we had to defer it waiting for G dot. Is that the same item?
At the East College Avenue and Sam's Crossing. I believe this is, yes.
Okay, there was supposed to be some written understanding with G dot. Has everybody gotten that? So that we can move forward in consent?
Yes, and I will confirm that, but yes, this is worked. It's with G dot and the board authorized this acceptance. Back in July and again in July sixteen and eighteen. But yeah, this was the one related to City of Avondale Estates.
We understand and it's already been on the agenda and it had to be pulled because.
That's the one.
Okay, if it's ready to go, then I say consent.
Okay. Consent, Commissioner? Okay, without objection, consent.
Followed by.
Hang on, we we're into purchasing items now, so.
You are, but I would like to pull zero two four eight.
Okay. Is ERPs Committee Chair, you fine with that?
Why do you want to pull that?
There was some LSBE spending as documented was not accurate. And we want to pull it and and update that.
You okay with that? Okay, I'll take that as a yes. I'm going to ask the rest of the committee chair just to briefly look over. Of the remaining purchasing items and then I'll ask for a go or no go here directly. So Ops Committee Chair?
I'm trying to pull up my agenda and.
No worries, we'll circle back to you.
Somebody send me the agenda.
PEX Committee Chair? You're you're okay? All right, yes. PWI Committee Chair?
Yes, please send all items as listed.
Okay, very good. Ops Committee Chair, have you gotten the info that you need yet?
No, just send them all. Send them all.
Okay, all right, so all the purchasing items will go to the committee of jurisdiction as listed. Continue, Miss Williams.
Yes, followed by two watershed items. One is, but yes, this is where it's with G dot and the board authorized this acceptance. Said the voice from the sky.
Are they walk-ons?
No, I think.
Are we on the watershed items, commissioners?
Yeah, were you just updating us on the on the Linear Gardens thing, Zach?
Yeah, I believe Mr. Manson was updating us on the Linear Gardens.
Okay, so we're good. It can stay on consent?
I believe so, Commissioner.
All right, we'll proceed. Go ahead.
Then we have two watershed management items. One is a click a quit claim deed by in between the City of Clarkston and DeKalb County. And another is a change order to item.
Let's pause on that one. Commissioner Gannon?
No, it just goes, these just go to PWI because they're watershed.
Okay.
And Commissioner?
Yeah, that's correct. Okay, Commissioner Cochran Johnson, you're okay with those two coming to your committee?
Absolutely.
All right, both of those preliminary with stops and public works. Continue, please.
Just to comment before we.
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, while we're doing the money, the money ones, I'm going to bring this up again. Only because, you know, as we reading everything in our NACO magazines and our statewide information. Talking about the budgetary impact of the kinds of spending that we are doing and will still need to do. At the county level for the coronavirus, I would ask again that we look very carefully. At what we're spending our money on now. And I know that Zach is going through these with the department heads. And the department heads do have great needs and, you know, good justifications for their departments. But I I would ask that we in committee also go over these to make sure that they are absolutely. Absolutely priorities until we have a better idea of how we're going to be managing some of our. Critical needs that we don't know how much longer we're going to have to be spending. So just bring it up again.
So all right.
Billy Noddy, COO.
Yes, I just want to say not only is the point well taken. You know, fortunately, as as you realize or will call, we have began. We began managing for an economic downturn last summer. So we continue that and as we look at each. Expenditure, it goes through that process where we, you know, are we absolutely sure we need this? And if we if we are absolutely sure we need it, do we need it now? And if we need it now, do we need that much? So those are the conversations that will continue. Commissioner Gannon, and I appreciate your raising that issue. To remind us all how important active management is, especially now.
All right, thank you. Continue, Mr. Williams.
Yes, so that concludes the set portion of the agenda, but I do have a walk-on item. That I will email to you. This was requested at the Ops Committee meeting last week. And it is for census, for the census program. And it was it's a total cost of three hundred eighty-one thousand, six hundred and sixteen dollars. The funding is going to come from General Fund, non-departmental, and it is extend the census. Data collection until July thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. And those of you from Ops will recall the discussion, the presentation. And the request for this agenda item. So I'm about to email it to you.
Okay, so that item will appear on the next Ops Committee agenda, is that?
Well, it is. It's been approved in Ops.
It has, okay.
Yes, so I think it would go to the regular agenda.
Okay, all right, Ops Committee Chair, that that all read out?
Yes, sir, I was just looking. I'm trying to do both like Commissioner Gannon, looking at the agenda while we talk. Yeah, it's it's the same budget item that we had in our committee, so if we can do consent, that'd be fine.
Okay, Commissioner Gannon?
Yeah, I'm good with consent, but can we send us again a list of the strategy? The kinds of things that they're going to be doing so we can plug into those?
Yes, we will get that to you. Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to make that a consent item or we're just going to include that in the Ops items when we when we meet again next Tuesday?
Yes, consent.
Okay, that's fine. If there's consensus, then we'll go with consent. I'm I'm good with that. Commission, I'm sorry, Mr. Williams, anything further?
No, Mr. Presiding Officer, that concludes.
Okay, are there any items to be added to this agenda by Commissioner? Any other commissioners, any other items? Right now I'm not seeing any. So in that case, we'll proceed with the recap. I think Ms. McKenzie's going to do the recap for us today.
Yes, sir. Mr. Metelski wants me to do video. Okay, so we have the airport item twenty twenty zero three ninety-two going to consent. We have a public works transportation item twenty twenty zero one eight two also consent. Item twenty twenty zero two four eight has been asked to be removed from the ERPs.
Okay.
And we have a number of items for preliminary stopping in Ops for next week. That is zero 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 six, zero one eight four, zero three nine zero, zero three nine one, zero four one six. We have an item stopping in PEX as a preliminary item, zero three eight zero. That's PEX today. We have for PWI today, zero three zero two, zero three nine five and zero four two one, preliminary with stopping in PWI. We have two items that are watershed, zero two six five and zero four two eight, preliminary with a stop in PWI. We have a walk-on item, which is the amendment to census twenty twenty operating budget. That number is twenty twenty zero four four three. It's going to be consent.
Yes.
We have two items under the Board of Commissioners section, zero four three six, which is the approval of minutes. For the April twenty-first, twenty twenty Committee of the Whole Meeting, which is this meeting here.
If there's no objection, consent. Proceed.
And then we have an item from the clerk, approval of minutes of the regular meeting of April fourteen, twenty twenty. That number is zero four three three.
Okay, if there is no objection, consent. All right, anything further, Ms. McKenzie?
That is it, sir.
All right, I think that takes us to the end of our printed agenda. Is there any other business to come before this committee a whole this morning? Yes, Commissioner Nancy Jester?
May I ask the COO a question about, and I don't have any problem with it being on consent and. Spending money for the the census, the that's it's already been approved in the Ops Committee. But did I I just want to make sure I heard you correct. Is that coming out of General Fund, non-departmental, you said?
That's correct.
Okay, what and what, I'm just looking at the financial statement for that that we just got. So I mean, mostly that's insurance and, you know, administrative overhead allocations. What what bucket from that particular non-departmental fund are you taking it from?
Be sure I will get that.
We have an item stopping in PEX as a preliminary item, zero three eight zero.
Oh, that was feedback.
Okay.
Yeah, that was feedback. Commissioner, I'll I'll get you that. I mean, I did not have a detailed conversation with the Budget Office, but that's.
Okay, yeah, because I mean, there there's very specific items that are in here and again, I don't have a problem. I I'm. Happy about our census spending. I'm not opposed to it being on consent or anything like that. Just, you know, just. I'm kind of persnickety about what buckets we're using, right?
Right, and so what will, right, and so. And if that needs to be updated between. Right, and so what will, right, and so, and if that needs to be updated between now and next Tuesday, we will do that.
Yeah, so just get me the details on that, to have a maybe detailed conversation with staff and then let me know if that's the right bucket. I'm just not sure it is, but I'm willing to, you know, hear that out.
All right, you got clarity on what the commissioners requesting, Zach?
Absolutely, absolutely. We'll get that to you today.
That work for you, Commissioner Jester, for now?
It does. Thank you for indulging. Thank you.
No problem, absolutely. Okay, any other business to come before this committee of the whole this morning? I don't see any, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Gannon, second my Commissioner Jester, and just so we're all square, we'll just move for approval by roll call. Commissioner Jester?
Aye.
Commissioner Jester's aye, Commissioner Rader?
Aye.
Commissioner Rader's aye, Commissioner Larry Johnson?
Yes.
Yes, Commissioner Davis Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Davis Johnson's aye, Commissioner Kathy Gannon?
Yes.
Kathy Gannon, yes, Commissioner Lorraine Cochran Johnson? I see that as an aye. Chair votes aye. We are adjourned. Thank you so much for your time and attention this morning and have a great day.
Great to you all.